Harper Ellison wasn't planning on speaking at the city council meeting, she just wanted to sit quietly in the back and listen. But when the discussion turned to demolishing the neighborhood park, where her late father used to take her every Sunday, her hands shot up before she could stop herself. The park is the only green space within walking distance for kids around here, she said, standing in her worn jeans and faded navy coat. You can't just replace it with another luxury condo tower. There were a few murmurs of agreement but most of the room was quiet. The council members sat behind their long wooden table, expressionless. Harper's voice was steady, but her heart was racing. She wasn't used to public speaking. She was used to blending in behind stacks of books at the library, behind the counter at the cafe she worked part time. Not standing in front of developers in suits. One chair at the end of the council table remained empty. She hadn't noticed it until now. The meeting continued and Harper sat back down, cheeks still flushed. A few more people from the neighborhood stood to voice their concerns, but the developers deflected with promises and vague reassurances. Harper could already tell this was a done deal. They'd made up their minds long before today, and then the door opened. The man who walked in didn't look like a politician. He didn't look like he belonged to this room at all. He was tall with dark, neatly styled hair, a sharp black coat that probably cost more than her rent, and the kind of presence that made the room shift without a word. He moved confidently but not arrogantly and took the empty seat at the end of the table without acknowledging the stairs. He was late, but no one dared say it. Harper didn't know who he was and she didn't care. He was probably just another suit who thought green space was a waste of money. But then he looked at her, it wasn't a glance. It was a full look like he was trying to place her in his mind. Harper turned away quickly, uncomfortable under the weight of his attention. The meeting wrapped up twenty minutes later with no resolution and people began to file out. Harper stayed behind, slipping her tote bag over her shoulder and moving toward the exit. Excuse me, a deep voice said behind her, she turned. The man who'd arrived late had stepped in front of her, blocking her path with a polite sort of ease. Up close, he was even more striking hazel eyes with flecks of something golden, a strong jaw, and the kind of quiet intensity that made her throat tighten. I'm Elias Dorn, he said, extending a hand. I'm on the community advisory board for the city's development office. I just wanted to say. You spoke well. Harper stared at his hand then shook it cautiously. Thanks, I wasn't planning on speaking, I just felt like I had to. I'm glad you did, he paused. You made a point no one else has, Harper blinked. Really? Because it felt like everyone was ignoring me. Not everyone. There was something about the way he said it, calm, certain, she let out a nervous laugh and started to move past him. Well, thanks again, I should go, I have a shift tonight. Where, she glanced back. Cafe Ember. It's a few blocks from here. His mouth twitched not quite a smile but close. Maybe I'll stop by. You don't have to, she said quickly, brushing a strand of hair behind her ear. It's just coffee and sandwiches, not exactly exciting. I like coffee, he nodded once. See you around, Harper. She hadn't told him her name, but she didn't ask how he knew, Elias Dorn didn't usually pay attention to city council meetings. He funded projects, paid architects, reviewed proposals. He didn't show up to listen to speeches. But he'd come tonight at the last minute because something had bothered him about the demolition plan. And now he knew why Harper Ellison. There was something about her that stuck with him honesty maybe. Or the way she stood up in a room full of people who'd already decided to ignore her. She didn't have an agenda. She wasn't looking for attention, she just cared. He wasn't used to that, his driver was waiting outside but Elias didn't get in. He stood on the sidewalk, hands in his coat pockets watching the people disperse. Then he turned and started walking. Harper was wiping down a counter when the bell over the door rang. She looked up and nearly dropped the rag, he was here. Not in a suit this time. A dark gray sweater, black slacks, a long coat still dusted with the cold night air. And those same eyes sharp, unreadable and focused entirely on her. You weren't kidding, he said, walking up to the counter. It really is just coffee and sandwiches. Harper stared at him, still holding the rag. You actually came, I said I would. You're kind of intense, you know that, he smiled then, the first real smile she'd seen from him. I've been told. She shook her head, trying not to smile back. What can I get you? Whatever you recommend. Risky? I like a risk with good odds, she made him a cappuccino and slid it across the counter. He took a sip, nodded in approval and sat at the far end of the bar. He stayed for two hours. They didn't talk much, he worked on his phone, she helped customers but every time she glanced his way he was watching her. And when he finally stood to leave, he dropped a hundred dollar bill on the counter. That's too much, she said, reaching for it. He covered her hand with his. It's not a tip, she froze. It's an investment. In what? You. And then he left. The next day Harper found a bouquet of white peonies and blue hydrangeas sitting outside her apartment door, no note, just a sleek black ribbon tied around the stems. And the day after that, he was back at the cafe this time with two coffees, one for her. I don't know what you're doing, she told him, narrowing her eyes. I'm investing in coffee, in you. She didn't understand it, she wasn't glamorous, she wasn't rich. She wasn't anything like the women she imagined a man like him dated, but he kept showing up. And slowly Harper stopped trying to push him away. Because every time she looked at Elias Dorn, she felt something she hadn't felt in years. Like maybe just maybe her life was about to change. Harper adjusted the strap of her messenger bag as she stepped out of the cafe's back entrance into the late evening air. The streets were quiet, the kind of quiet that made every footstep echo. She was halfway down the block when a sleek black car slowed beside the curb. The passenger window rolled down. Need a ride? Elias leaned slightly toward the open window, one hand on the steering wheel, his expression unreadable, Harper blinked. You followed me? No, he said simply. I waited. That doesn't make it better. I didn't want you walking home this late, she glanced down the street then back at him. You're not exactly subtle, are you? I don't do subtle. Get in. She hesitated, then pulled open the door and slid into the passenger seat. The leather interior was warm and the scent of cedar and something crisp lingered in the air. The car purred forward. You always make decisions this quickly, she asked, settling in. Only when I'm certain, Elias didn't look at her as he said it, but she could feel the weight behind the words. She folded her arms, suddenly aware of how quiet the city felt from inside this cocoon of luxury. You don't know anything about me, she said, her voice low. I know enough to want to. That's vague on purpose. Because the rest I'd rather find out from you, she turned her head toward the window. You're impossible. And yet here you are. They drove in silence for a moment. Harper watched the city blur past, the lights casting long shadows across the dashboard. You didn't grow up in this part of the city, she said suddenly. No. Where then? Europe, mostly Switzerland, then Boston. So you're not local. I am now, she glanced at him. You don't talk like a man used to being told no. I'm told no more than you'd think. By who? My board, the press, occasionally my mother. Harper laughed, surprised by the way it burst out of her. Elias glanced at her, a flicker of something warmer crossing his face. Why do you care about that park, he asked. Because it's the only place in that district that belongs to everyone. Not just people who can afford penthouses or valet parking. You think I'm trying to take it away? I think you're part of a machine that doesn't care what it replaces. He didn't respond right away. When he spoke, his tone was quieter. I never meant to be a machine. The car pulled up outside her building, Harper looked at the familiar chipped brick and flickering hallway light. This is me, she said. Elias didn't move to unlock the doors. Come to dinner with me tomorrow. Harper stared at him in disbelief. Why? Because I want to know what you look like when you're not bracing for a fight. I don't, you do, he interrupted gently. Even now. Like you're waiting for me to turn into something worse. She turned toward the door, fingers on the handle. You're offering me dinner like it's a challenge. No, he said. Like it's an invitation, she paused then looked back at him. Where? I'll send a car, seven o'clock, dress for wherever you want to end up. That made her laugh again but softer this time. You're ridiculous. But persuasive. This time she didn't argue, the next evening Harper stood in front of her closet staring at the few dresses she owned. Most were practical, a few were for weddings or funerals, and one still had a tag she'd never removed. She chose that one. When the black car arrived at exactly seven, she was ready. The restaurant wasn't one she recognized. It sat on the top floor of an unmarked building with floor to ceiling windows and a view of the city that stole her breath. The maître d greeted Elias by name and led them to a private table near the glass wall. The table was already set with crystal glasses and candles that flickered in the low light. Waitstaff moved like shadows, silent and precise. Is this how you usually eat dinner, she asked as she sat down. No, he said. Usually I eat at my desk answering emails. So this is, what, a special occasion? I'm trying something new. The waiter arrived with champagne, she raised an eyebrow. I don't usually celebrate first dinners, she said, I do, the glasses clinked. They talked about things she didn't expect. Not business or development plans but books they'd both read, places they'd traveled to, foods she hadn't tried. Elias listened more than he spoke and when he did speak, it was never to impress her. It was to understand. What's the worst decision you ever made, she asked suddenly, he didn't hesitate. I trusted someone who saw me as a transaction, she tilted her head. A woman, he nodded once. And you, Harper stared at her glass for a long moment. I gave up something I loved because I thought it wasn't practical. What was it? Art, drawing, I haven't touched a sketchpad in years. Why not? Because I needed to pay rent, he leaned forward. What if you didn't, she blinked. What does that mean? You're talented, you care. That matters more than most things people are willing to admit. If money weren't a problem, what would you do tomorrow? I'd buy the biggest sketchpad I could find. Then we'll find one. She shook her head, laughing under her breath. You think everything can be solved with money. No, Elias said, but it can buy time, and time can solve almost anything. She looked at him for a long moment, unsure what to say to that. The dessert arrived without them noticing. Harper picked at it absently, still trying to figure out what this night meant. As they stood to leave, Elias reached into his coat and handed her a small box. What is this? A thank you. She opened it. Inside was a set of graphite pencils wrapped in a velvet ribbon and a key. She looked up confused. A key to what, he held her gaze. A place to draw, her throat tightened. Elias, this is too much. It's only too much if you don't use it. She didn't know how to respond so she didn't not yet. But when he walked her back to the car and closed the door behind her, she held the box tightly in her lap the entire ride home. And for the first time in too long, she felt something stirring in her chest. Possibility. Harper stepped into the loft and froze. The key Elias had given her two nights ago had unlocked the front door to a second floor studio tucked above a quiet floral shop. The space was wide and sun filled, its windows stretching nearly from floor to ceiling. Sunlight spilled across the hardwood floors, catching on the edges of a long wooden table already stocked with supplies paper, brushes, charcoal, pastels. Even a small easel positioned near the windows, her breath caught. This wasn't just a place to draw. It was a sanctuary. She moved slowly, fingertips grazing the edge of the table. Every item had been chosen intentionally, from the soft grip pencils to the French sketchbooks she hadn't seen since college. A folded note rested near the center. It was handwritten brief. If you're going to draw, do it somewhere that inspires you. There was no signature, none was needed, she set the note aside and opened the largest pad. Her hand hovered over the blank page uncertain. It had been so long since she'd let herself create without purpose, without fear. But she picked up a pencil anyway, and began. By the time the sun began to dip behind the buildings, Harper's hands were smudged with graphite and her hair had fallen loose from her braid. The page in front of her was filled with lines and light, a half finished portrait of the view from the window. Rooftops and chimneys and distant streetlights just beginning to flicker. She hadn't noticed how quiet her mind had become, until a soft knock startled her. Elias stood in the doorway, a paper bag in one hand. I figured you'd forget to eat, she blinked at him, disoriented. How did you know I'd be here today? I didn't, he said, stepping inside. I guessed. He set the bag on the table and pulled out two containers steamed dumplings and a small box of noodles. I thought you'd prefer something casual after all the candles and crystal. She reached for the chopsticks, still stunned. You really don't do things halfway, do you? I don't see the point. They sat side by side at the edge of the table, their knees almost touching. Harper ate slowly, her mind still half in the sketch, Elias glanced at the unfinished drawing. You lose track of time when you're in it, don't you, she nodded. It's like everything else gets quiet, I envy that. You don't have anything that does that for you. Only when I'm flying, she looked at him puzzled. Like flying a plane, he nodded. I got my license when I was twenty. I keep a small jet just outside the city. Harper raised an eyebrow. Of course you do. Would you come with me sometime? I don't know if I trust you with both romance and altitude. Fair, he replied, smiling faintly. We'll work up to it. A beat of silence passed between them, the kind that didn't feel uncomfortable just expectant, she set her chopsticks down. Why are you doing all of this, Elias looked at her, quiet for a moment. Because I don't want to just be another name on a building you resent. That's not an answer. I think you're extraordinary, Harper, and I'm not used to meeting someone who doesn't want anything from me but honesty. She tilted her head, studying him. You're a complicated man. I'm trying to become a simpler one, she didn't look away. That sounds hard. It is, he stood slowly. But I don't mind hard if it leads somewhere real. Harper rose as well, arms crossed. You're not going to kiss me, are you, Elias stepped closer, careful not to touch her. Not tonight, she looked up at him, heart pounding. Why not? Because if I do, I won't walk away, and I think you're not ready for what that means, she swallowed. Then why keep showing up? Because I'm already not walking away. He left without another word, leaving the door slightly ajar behind him. Harper stood in the quiet, the scent of dumplings still in the air and the weight of something unspoken pressing gently against her chest. The next morning she returned to the studio before sunrise. She didn't open the door right away. She stood in the hallway, her breath visible in the early chill and tried to make sense of the ache blooming behind her ribs. No one had ever seen her this clearly and chosen to stay. She stepped inside, dropped her bag and reached for the charcoal. Later that afternoon at the cafe she was wiping down a table when someone cleared their throat. Miss Ellison, she turned. A woman in her early sixties stood in the doorway, dressed in a tailored navy coat and heels sharp enough to click against the tile. Her posture was perfect, her expression unreadable. Yes, I'm Marian Dorn, Elias's mother, Harper's stomach twisted. Oh, we need to talk, the woman said, her voice cool and polite. Preferably somewhere less fluorescent. Harper untied her apron with numb fingers and followed her outside, they walked to a nearby bench under a row of bare limbed trees. Misses. Dorn sat gracefully folding her gloves in her lap. I'm going to be direct, she began. My son doesn't bring people into his life lightly. When he does, he tends to think with his heart first, and that heart has been broken more than once. I'm not trying to hurt him, Harper said quietly. I'm sure you're not, but intentions don't always prevent consequences, Harper's throat tightened. Why are you telling me this? Because Elias listens to you, that's rare, but he's also vulnerable to idealism, he wants to believe in people. Sometimes too quickly. I don't want anything from him, Mrs. Dorn studied her carefully, and yet he's given you a space, art supplies and I imagine soon much more. I didn't ask for any of it. I believe you, her tone softened slightly. But the world he comes from our world it changes people, Harper. It tests them. Are you willing to be tested? Harper didn't answer, Mrs. Dorn stood. If you are, then don't run the next time he offers you something that scares you. She walked away without saying goodbye. Harper sat alone on the bench, heart pounding. She hadn't realized how much Elias had already given her. Or how much more he could undo the next time Elias called, Harper didn't hesitate. She met him outside the studio just after dusk, a bag slung over one shoulder, charcoal still dusted faintly on her fingertips. He took one look at her and wordlessly opened the door of the waiting car. She slid in beside him, a quiet current passing between them charged, unspoken. Neither of them asked where they were going. The car wound through the city and crossed into the quieter, tree lined avenues near the river. When they stopped, Harper stepped out and immediately heard the soft hush of water and the faint echo of live music. The building in front of them was old world elegant, its brick facade lit by soft golden sconces. A valet opened the door, Elias offered his hand. Trust me, she took it. That depends, is there a dress code? Not for you. Inside, the space was transformed into something just shy of a dream. A string quartet played in the far corner, their notes drifting through the candlelit air. Tables were arranged in a wide circle around a small raised stage. Servers moved silently, the scent of saffron and wine weaving through the room, but it wasn't a restaurant, it was an art gallery. And every wall was lined with framed sketches. Harper froze, they were hers, dozens of them, from the past weeks. Some she'd left unfinished, others she hadn't even realized he'd seen. Landscapes, window views, glimpses of faces in the crowd. They were displayed with reverence like they belonged here, she turned to him, her chest tightening. I didn't how did you? I asked the landlord for access, Elias said quietly. And your permission was implied when you left them out in the open. That's not how permission works, she said, her voice hushed but fierce, he nodded. You're right, if you want me to take them down, I will, tonight, every last one. She looked back at the sketches. People were already walking through, stopping in front of them. No names on the labels, no prices, just titles, some she hadn't even given but people were looking and that meant something. Why would you do this, she asked, still facing away. Because I wanted the world to see what I see, she turned back to him. You didn't ask me. I should have. Harper stepped closer, her voice low. You keep giving me these things, spaces, gestures, attention. But you don't ask what I want. What do you want? I want to belong to something that isn't built on someone else deciding I'm worth it, Elias's eyes didn't waver. Then let me earn my place, not by giving, by standing beside you, Harper stared at him, the music swelling in the background. The weight of his words settled between them like something tangible. I don't need you to rescue me, she said, I know. And I'm not a secret project, you're not. Then stop trying to fix what isn't broken, he drew in a breath. I'm not trying to fix you. I'm trying to be the man who doesn't leave when things get real, she looked at him for a long time, then slowly she reached for his hand. Then stop curating me, she said, and start knowing me, he nodded once. Deal. Later that night they stood on the rooftop above the gallery. The city stretched out around them, lights shimmering like scattered stars. Elias handed her a glass of something cold and sparkling but she didn't drink. Instead she leaned against the railing, her shoulder brushing his. I met your mother, she said, he turned slightly. When? Two days ago. She came to the cafe, his jaw tightened. What did she say? That you've been hurt before, that you trust too easily when it comes to people like me. She said that, she said it carefully, but yes. He stared out over the skyline, she means well. But she doesn't understand what it's like to want something that doesn't come with a price tag, Harper nodded. She doesn't scare me, she scares most people. I'm not most people, he looked over at her, eyes warm. That's what I keep telling them. I didn't say I'm fearless, she added. I'm just not afraid of who you are, Elias set his glass down and turned to face her fully. Then I need to tell you something, she waited. The park project, your park, I pulled out of it. What? The development deal. I withdrew my funding. Without me, the city has to reevaluate. Why would you? Because I finally understood what it meant to destroy something irreplaceable. Harper shook her head stunned. That wasn't the only reason, was it? No, he said. The other reason was you, she let out a breath, not quite a sigh. You realize this changes everything. It's supposed to, she stepped closer. So now what, he reached for her hand. Now we stop pretending this isn't the most terrifying and honest thing either of us has ever done, Harper laughed, the sound catching in her throat. You're not what I expected. I'm not what anyone expects. She looked up at him and this time she didn't wait for him to move first, she kissed him. It wasn't cautious or tentative. It was full of everything they hadn't said, everything they were still learning how to say. His hand found the small of her back, steady and certain, and for the first time in years, Harper didn't feel like she was bracing for impact. She felt like she was landing when they pulled apart, Elias leaned his forehead to hers. Come with me tomorrow, he said quietly. I want to show you something. More gifts? No, he said. Just a place, one I haven't shared with anyone since I bought it. She traced her thumb along his jaw. Then you'll ask and I'll decide, he smiled, something slow and real and unguarded. Deal. The next morning they boarded a private plane, Harper sat by the window, sketchpad in her lap, Elias beside her watching the clouds drift past. When they landed, the car took them north into the hills. At the end of a winding road, a quiet villa overlooked a lake so still it looked like glass. The air was cool and sweet, pine trees swaying softly in the breeze. This is yours, she asked. It was never mine until now, she glanced at him. Why now? Because I needed someone to see it with me. They walked the grounds in silence. Harper sketched a bench beneath a weeping willow. Elias watched her with that same quiet awe he never tried to hide. At sunset, he brought her to the edge of the water where a string of soft lights had been hung between two trees. A table waited, white linen. Two chairs, Elias, she said carefully, what is this? I told you I wanted to know you. I meant all of you. He reached into his jacket pocket and pulled out a small box, her breath caught. No, she whispered. I'm not asking you to say yes today, he opened it. Inside, a ring glinted beneath the fading light. I'm asking you to believe that I'm not going anywhere. Harper stared at him, heart thundering, then she reached for his hand and closed the box gently. I believe you, she said, but I want the next step to be mine too, he nodded. Then we wait. They sat together beneath the trees, the lake rippling behind them, the stars just beginning to appear. And for the first time in both their lives, they weren't waiting for something better, they were building it. Together. The scent of lavender drifted through the air as Harper stood barefoot in the villa's garden, the grass cool against her skin. The moon hung low, casting a silvery glow over the lake's surface. Behind her, soft music filtered through the open windows of the bedroom, classical piano, delicate and steady. It was the same piece Elias had played for her earlier that evening, his fingers gliding across the keys with a concentration she hadn't seen before. She turned at the sound of footsteps. Elias stepped into view jacket off, sleeves rolled to his elbows, his expression unreadable in the moonlight. He held something in his hand, a folded envelope. He offered it to her without a word, Harper unfolded it slowly. Inside was a single sheet of thick parchment. Her name was written in black ink at the top and beneath it, a proposal not romantic but legal. A trust, a foundation, the Ellison Initiative, she read aloud, glancing up. What is this, his voice was quiet but firm. A project to preserve community spaces in underfunded neighborhoods. Starting with your park and expanding citywide, I've already spoken to the board. Why my name? Because it was your fight first, I just followed your lead. She folded the paper carefully, her fingers trembling slightly. You didn't need to do this, I know, he said, but I wanted to. Not for you, with you, she stepped closer, her heart thudding. You realize if we do this, it's not just about us anymore, I'm counting on that. Harper searched his face for hesitation but found none, only steadiness, only him. I'm scared, she admitted. I'm not, he said. Not anymore. They were quiet for a long moment, then she reached for his hand and laced her fingers through his. Then let's do something terrifying, she said. Together. The following weeks unfolded as if they were writing a new chapter every day. The foundation launched quietly without press releases or ribbon cuttings. Harper insisted on that. She wanted the work to speak for itself. Elias agreed, surprising her with how easily he stepped out of the spotlight. While the board meetings continued, Harper spent her mornings at the studio, now fully hers. Her art had taken on new shape portraits of neighborhoods, sketches of children playing on cracked basketball courts, images of long Images of long forgotten parks brought back to life. Her work was featured in a citywide gallery series focusing on urban renewal. She refused to attend the opening. Elias went in her place. He stood quietly in the back, watching as people paused in front of her drawings, their expressions changing with each piece. He didn't speak to anyone. He didn't have to. At home, they settled into something that felt impossibly simple. He read while she drew. She cooked badly and he ate every bite without complaint. They argued about documentaries, about whether or not to get a dog, about whether her sketchpad could be brought to bed. She learned he couldn't sleep without a window cracked. He learned she couldn't sleep unless her feet were touching his leg. One night after a particularly long board meeting, Harper came home to find a dress laid out on the bed, soft ivory silk. Beside it, a handwritten note. Wear this. Meet me on the terrace. She didn't hesitate. When she stepped outside, the garden had been transformed, string lights, candles, and a path of white petals leading to the table beneath the willow tree. Elias stood waiting in a charcoal suit and no tie, his hands behind his back. She stopped at the edge of the path. You're not proposing again, are you, she said, half teasing. No, he said. I'm giving you something else. He stepped forward and handed her a worn leather bound book. Inside were pages of her sketches, printed and bound her first published collection. Her name was on the cover. I wanted it to be a surprise, he said, her fingers traced the spine. You did this. I had help, but it's yours. Every bookstore in the city will carry it next week. Harper stared at him, emotion rising fast in her throat. You're going to ruin me for anyone else, she whispered. That's the idea. Then he pulled her into his arms and the rest of the night unfolded in quiet celebration, just the two of them. The stars above and the soft rustle of wind through the trees. Months passed. The foundation expanded into three more cities. Harper's second collection was commissioned before the first had finished its run. The studio moved into a larger space with glass walls and a view of the city skyline, but she still kept the original loft. It was where it all began. They didn't need a wedding to prove anything. But one spring morning as they stood together on the balcony of the lake villa, Elias turned to her and said. Let's do it. Not for them, for us. And Harper, barefoot and holding a mug of coffee, nodded once. The ceremony was held in the garden beneath the same willow tree. No guests, just them, two rings and vows spoken in whispers. That night she drew him as he slept, his face softened, his hand curled at the edge of the sheet where hers had been, she titled it. Home. Years later they returned to the same bench where his mother had first spoken to her. The city had changed. The café had expanded, the park had been restored and renamed in honor of her father. You were right, Harper said, leaning into his shoulder. About what? That terrifying things are worth it, he kissed the top of her head. We're not done being terrifying, she laughed. Good. Because I'm not done being impossible. They sat quietly watching children run through the grass, the distant sound of music drifting from a nearby street performance. And in that moment, everything felt exactly as it should be, whole. Real. Theirs.